I'm gonna say 30 seconds, I'm gonna say, we'll get a bell later, I am gonna do some of that stuff.
This regular meeting of the city council will now come to order, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. President DePiero.
Here.
Eleven members present.
The audience, please join us in saluting the flag.
Let's just to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum, is there a motion to open public participation? Motion made and seconded to open public participation, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, I believe Counselor DeFlorio has the sheet.
Mr. President, before I call the people up, I just wanna know, let them know that it's two minutes each, and thirty seconds before your two minutes is up, the city clerk is gonna tell you when to stop. Okay?
Correct.
So, the first speaker would be Isabel Martin Allen.
Good evening, my name is Isabel Martin Allen, and I am retired state employee who has been living in the city of Everett for the last forty-nine years as a taxpaying citizen. I am also a member of an organization, an advocacy group called One Everett, which I'm sure that probably most and maybe all of you know about, and the subject for me today is jobs. Specifically jobs that are affected by the Wynn project, the casino, hotel, et cetera, and all of those little outshoots that are gonna be affected by the fact that wind is coming here, I believe in the spring of 2019. The reason I'm here is because we feel that time is of the essence, and that if the people in Everett who really want and need better jobs get them, we need to make sure that they are getting the right training, that they are prepared in a timely manner, and I believe that time is of the essence. If we're talking about the casino opening up, I believe it's next spring, am I right? No, spring of 2019. I wrote myself a few notes so I wouldn't forget anything, and what I wanna talk about, what is needed to ensure that interested Everett residents are given the opportunity to secure successful jobs, in other words, getting the skills, having the qualifications for the jobs. And my questions are to you, is what can you do to help ensure that these residents are able to secure the jobs at the casino and all the other agents, organizations? For example, we think these things are needed, a list of the Wynn jobs, and the specific job duties, and what type of skills are required to have a successful job interview and hopefully be hired for positions. Okay, training is gonna be needed. Thank you pardon? Okay, well, we're talking about training, identifying who will be doing the training, identifying who, what agencies, organizations will be doing that, and we need a plan to accomplish the above in a timely manner to ensure that we have the success, that the people are trained, that they're informed, and that they are job-ready when the time comes. Am I done?
Time's up, yep.
Did okay with my time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, hi. Okay, my name is Irma Fiestas, I have been an Everett resident for twenty-one years, and I'm the president of the PTO Everett High, so I'm working at La Comunidad in one Everett organization, so I work to ensure, we work to ensure access to residents in all aspects of civic life-building and healthy relationship with community, and warranty attention of the economic and social injustice opportunity to jobs in casino. Everett residents want to work with our municipal government to successfully support at least five hundred of our residents and obtain good job-paying jobs at the Wynn Casino. So, basis of their research, one Everett has done, just about ten thousand Everett residents leave the city, every, leave the city, out the city every day, every day to go, work alone, wages-paying jobs. There is tremendous sense of urgent in the part of the state, some of this work is already happening, for the permanent face, face of the jobs at the Wynn Casino, we Everett residents don't want to miss the vote, so we need your help for this, thanks, please.
Thank you.
Pietro Zabito.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Mi nombre es Pedro Zubietta. Soy de Colombia, voté por Carlos Di Maria porque he visto su buen trabajo y su buena labor.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Pedro Zubietta, I've lived in Everett all my life. I voted for the mayor because I've seen all that good work that he's done, that has happened under his leadership.
Tuvimos una casa en la ciudad hace ocho años, desafortunadamente cuando vino la crisis económica la tuvimos que devolver al banco.
I used to own a house about eight years ago, but unfortunately the economic downturn, I lost my home.
Desafortunadamente cuando uno no tiene un buen trabajo donde está recibiendo un buen salario se ve abocado a tener este tipo de situaciones.
And unfortunately, when you have, when you don't have a good paying job, you have to face these types of problems.
Trabajo en el aeropuerto Logan, en la compañía de Sky Chef, mi salario es de catorce cincuenta. Para el trabajo que hacemos y para el sacrificio que realizamos entrando a las cuatro de la mañana y saliendo a la una o dos de la tarde, no es justo.
I currently work at Logan Airport, I work for Sky Chef, my hourly wages are about fourteen dollars and change, and clearly for all the work that I've done for this company, for all the time that I've been there, this is not enough to sustain a decent way of living.
El casino Wynn va a proveer muchos trabajos, y nosotros como residentes de Everett queremos que la gran mayoría de estos trabajos queden para los residentes de Everett. Nosotros hemos pagado impuestos y hemos apoyado todo este proceso que ha hecho el gobierno local.
The Everett Casino project is gonna create a lot of impact, and clearly the jobs area is gonna be one of those things that we think we should benefit from. We all pay taxes, we all supported the idea of the project in the city, and we think that we should have really good paying jobs in return.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Por eso les damos gracias a ustedes de que nos apoyen para que los trabajos queden en los residentes de Everett, gracias.
And we would, I would like to ask you for your support and to thank you for leadership ahead of time, because we feel that a lot of those should remain, you know, for Everett residents in our city, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker, so I'll make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made and seconded to close public participation, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Would John Hanlon please come up and join me?
Ladies and gentlemen, and members of the council, this is to award our president with the presidential plaque that we give to each one of our presidents. I wanted to just say that Anthony DePiero is like sort of a new guy to politics, and in his second year of politics, he becomes a president. What can we expect out of a guy, excuse me, that is that young in politics? Well, he surprised us all by knowing an awful lot, he did a terrific job, it's not easy, folks, to control ten people that are sitting in front of you whenever he wants to get up and talk, he did a great job, he gave everybody an equal chance, everybody was pleased with him, I haven't heard a bad word about him yet, and I haven't talked to all of his girlfriends, but you know, maybe one of these, one of these days we'll find out something, but to me, he's like one of the guys I'm gonna remember forever for what he's done for this last year. So, we have a plaque that we want to present to him.
You want me to read it, you read it. I'll read it. You read it. I wanna congratulate Anthony also. This is from the city council, the membership here and his staff. Whereas in the performance of his duties as president, he has ever been actuated by a spirit of fairness and a desire to maintain harmonious relations between himself and the members, and whereas his efforts in this direction have won for him the respect and goodwill of his fellow members, thereby enabling him at all times to maintain the dignity of his office, therefore, be it resolved that in full recognition of his valued services, this testimonial be presented to Counselor Anthony DePiero, the 2017 council president. Congratulations, my friend. Do you wanna take a photo up there?
Thank you very much, John and Sergio, that was very nice of you guys. Picture. Picture first, okay. Thank you once again, guys, and thank you to all my fellow counselors, first of all, for allowing me to be the president in my first term and having the trust in me, and it's been a great working relationship with each and every one of you throughout the year. I think we've been able to work together very closely, productively, respectfully, even though we didn't always agree on everything, we came up with good solutions and figured things out the right way. When you first elected me, I said our work in city government is not about any one of us, but about the impact we make when we work as a team to positively impact the lives of people of Everett, and I can honestly say that I think we've done that all year. There's a few people that I wanna thank for their knowledge and advice throughout my presidency, helping making it a success, those individuals in Mayor Di Maria, Michael Madarazzo, David Rigucci, John Burley, and Caroline McCrory, our assistant in the office, all were of tremendous help in helping guiding me, and of course, the person that's been there every step of the way, my good friend Sergio Canelio, who would often return from meetings and find me eating breakfast at his desk every morning. In this new year, I look forward to returning to the floor, debating the issues with you, working together for another term, and happy new year, everyone, thank you. What thing first? Yes, Counselor McGlaughlin, will you step forward, please?
Good evening, everybody. It gives me a great honor to stand this evening before the city council to recognize one of our fellow colleagues and one of my dear friends, she's a dear friend to all of us in these chambers. I ran for public office in 2011 because I wanted to make a change in my neighborhood, and I wanted to learn from great leaders, and Cynthia Sani was one of those great leaders I hoped to learn from, and I was able to in 2011 when we got elected to the common council together to represent Board Six, and I learned every day from that point forward that Cynthia Sani cares about Everett, she cares about Everett for the right reasons, not about herself, she never looks for a pat on the back, she's not doing anything for personal gain, she's doing it for us, everybody in these chambers and everybody across the city of Everett. She wakes up every day hoping that she can make a change for somebody else in the city of Everett, and again, it has been an honor to call her my friend personally, when I've become sick over the past few years, there's few people in your life you'll remember forever that were by your side, and Cynthia Sani was one of those individuals in 2015, and most recently again, coming to the hospital to visit me quite often, and always there to help my family and I. I've asked Cynthia to come before us so that I can present a citation to our colleague and our good friend, Counselor Cynthia Sani. So, I'm gonna read the citation, Everett, Massachusetts citation, "Be it here known to all that the Everett City Council and his honor the mayor hereby offer the sincerest congratulations to Counselor Cynthia Ellen Sani in recognition of swearing in of the Everett City Council from, excuse me, February thirteenth, 2017 to December thirty-first, 2017, with a dedication of civic spirit, you will be missed. The entire city government extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune, given this twenty-sixth day of December, 2017, signed by Council President Anthony DePiero and the entire city council." You've seen Cynthia Sani tonight, it's not her last night, you'll see her again in the future, representing our community. Counselor, congratulations and best wishes.
I don't wanna be caught.
I would like to thank Counselor McGlaughlin for those kind words. I'd like to also thank everybody here, working with everybody, I enjoy, you know, each time coming in the chambers and working with everyone. I'd like to thank everyone in the community who has supported me, and I'd like to thank my family and friends who helped me through the last over ten years during campaigning and, you know, working each day with the mayor and his administration, they all worked together with me and I never had a problem, so I wanna thank everybody because I will miss all of yous, thank you.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President, the sign-in sheet is here, and there is an attorney here on item number nine, excuse me, number nine. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item nine, all in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, item nine, Mr. Clerk.
Item number nine is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a lodging license to Joseph's Lodge at three twelve, no, three twelve dash three fourteen Broadway. Can invite him up.
Is all the paperwork in order, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, everything's been signed off, all the sign-offs are here, they're all, they're in order. And you have the police reports from the whole city.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order, please call the roll.
Yep, on the, on the motion.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
On the motion. I know that our city clerk, he just recently got the most recent police reports of all of our lodge.
You do have them before you.
You have.
I, I, I handed them to everybody. I do have another copy here, if you need it.
Nothing pops out.
So, so, if you'd like me to speak very briefly, is that okay?
Go ahead.
So, the, all of, I mean, there's all different kinds of calls for almost every lodging house in the city except for one, I believe. Many of them, you can't attach to the property because they're, you know, towed vehicles or calls from out front, so they just use the closest address. You know, there are a few that seem like that they would affect the actual property, maybe an arrest, a disturbance, a few, but most of them are motor vehicle issues, check well-beings, you know, people just call to make sure everyone's all right. I think there were twenty-five total for this, this is in the whole year. I don't know if you have them in front of you, but you can see what they say, a few of them are medical also, so those aren't going against you, that they're doing anything incorrect, you know.
Counselor McKinnon?
So, and this is for the three twelve property?
So, in front of you, you have all properties, but the first one is three twelve, it just goes in, in order, so three twelve happens to be the first because that's Broadway. So, those are, those are the ones right there, so.
And these, these, what?
This is for the entire year, from January first of this year until, I think I received these on.
It's like twenty-two?
Friday, I think it's twenty-five total, it gives you the number on the bottom, twenty-five, but as you see, some of them are motor vehicles, that means they just attach it in front, you know, someone gets pulled over or towed, but they just use in the closest address. Some of them, I'm not sure what they are, I'm not gonna lie to you, I don't know all the codes, I don't know what a two oh nine A is, but some of the other ones I recognize.
Yeah, it's a restraint.
I'm sure you have.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to get a little clarification on where it was, and this is at the Broadway property, correct?
The first one is the, is the Broadway property, correct? Thank you. You're welcome.
There are no further questions, please call the roll.
On item number nine, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
And President DePiero.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed.
Mr. Chairman, could we take items six, seven, eight, ten, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen collectively, these are all motor vehicle renewals of one form or another?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items six, seven, eight, ten, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
All papers.
Give me one more, yeah.
Yep.
I got it, it's just in front of me. It ends at seventeen, Mr. President, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you, nope, I have them all, thank you, I was just making sure. Okay. Item number six is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a motor vehicle dealer and repair license to European Motors at five eleven Second Street. Item number seven is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president, a renewal for second-class motor vehicle dealer license from Parkway Auto Sales at sixteen seventy-three River Beach Parkway. Item number eight, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a renewal for the second-class motor vehicle dealer license for KC Auto Sales at three twelve Main Street. Item number ten is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a second-class motor dealer renewal license to Malden Auto of Everett at eighty-seven Broadway. Item number eleven is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a lodging house license renewal for one thirty-four lodging, I'm sorry.
No, that wasn't.
That was my mistake, I thought you said them. So, item number thirteen is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant the renewal of a second-class motor dealer license for Ferry Street Service and Auto Sales at four sixty-four Ferry Street. Fourteen is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant a second-class motor dealer license for Circle Autobody, Inc. at twenty-sixth Thorn Dyke Street. Item number fifteen is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president for, to grant the renewal of an autobody license for Circle Autobody, Inc. at twenty-sixth Thorn Dyke Street. Item number sixteen is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant the renewal of second-class motor dealer license for New England Body Works at thirty-five, excuse me, thirty-five Mystic Street. And item number seventeen is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to grant the second-class motor dealer license at Carlida USA LLC at three fifty-three Third Street.
Favorable action on the audit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order, do you have a question, Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Because we always ask the clerk, and that is, are the papers in order according to his office and all our rules and everything?
Everything has been stamped in, signed by all respective departments, all their licenses and bonds are current for all dealers that are here before us. And all renewals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Some of them don't say it.
Regarding item ten, which is Malden Autobody, this license being granted to them at their current location, we're aware of a future move, but this, that, later on, it's just a question of moving license to a new address, is that correct?
Right, if they, if they, if they don't renew it there, they relinqu, they're pretty much relinquishing it, and then they can't come back before you to ask for it again because there's no more licenses, so that's why they're doing this.
Okay, thank you.
And they're, they're still there until January, so, just so you know. Counselor McGlaughlin?
So, just what I understand, Malden Autobody, their renewal tonight doesn't automatically transfer to their new location, they have to come back.
No, always, licenses are granted.
Site-specific?
Correct.
Okay.
You cannot transfer the license, goes to the person at that, at that location, you just can't move them, you have to ask for it to be moved. You have to ask for it to, to be moved. And it always comes back to, through the council. I don't have the authority to just do it on my own.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
All right. Please call the roll.
So. You're voting on all of them. The roll call vote, okay? Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
All orders have passed. Is there a motion to take items one through five collectively?
Second.
Motion made in second to take items one through five collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the eyes have it.
Item number one is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to accept the donation of $1,500 from Everett Donuts, Inc., DBA Dunkin' Donuts into the Everett Police Department's K9 account. Item number two is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to accept the donation of $16,000 from Everett Foundation for the Age Persons to be deposited into the City of Everett's Council on Aging Donation Account. Item number three is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to accept the donation of $1,600 from ExxonMobil to the City of Everett's donation account to help fund the 2018 Summer Job Program. Item number four is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to accept the donation of $1,500 to the Everett Police Department's K9 account from ExxonMobil Corporation. And item number five is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to accept the donation of $200 from Stephen La Longo to be deposited into the City of Everett's Council on Aging Donation Account.
Favorable action on the orders and please send a letter of thanks to all the donors.
Second.
Motion made in second for favorable action. The letter of thanks be sent. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Orders have passed. Is there a motion to take items 11 and 12? Motion made in second to take items 11 and 12 collectively? All in favor? Oppose the eyes have it.
Item number 11 is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to grant a lodging house license renewal for 134 Linden Street Lodging. Item number 12 is an order offered by Council Anthony DePiero as president to grant a lodging house license renewal for Fennels at 336 Broadway.
Is everything in order?
Yes. Yes, all copies are in order, signed off. Just so you know, I was called to, if you don't mind me speaking.
Go ahead.
On the license. So at 134 Linden Street, we did have a issue a few months back and the ISD department had called me and we've, we did an inspection, so there were some violations. They have corrected them since then, but I wanted to inform the council. So I will continue to go over their Broadway location, which we had issues with last year with the fence, was all rectified and they fixed all that. So at 134, I'll make sure the, the same thing, but as of now, everything's in order and up to date, so I just wanted to inform the council.
Counsel McKinnon?
You don't have your mic on, Counsel.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Good looking out. There was a call at 336 Medical Overdose. That was one call.
That's the only one that I saw, but like I said, we, we had, there were some violations that ISD fire and they called myself out to, to inspect with them.
Okay.
Because they want, you know, you licensed them.
Now, on that license, what did we do before with it? I remember we sang, put a couple of sanctions in place.
So, so what we do is, one, the license goes for a year no matter what. We can't give them a six-month license, a one-month license, but what you can do is ask to review it every three to six months. You could ask me to, to send the report back. Those are your options.
Are we, are we currently doing that with this property?
With this property, we, not 134. We did it with 336. I'd come back to you twice.
Okay.
All issues were rectified and we, we ceased the, you know, the continual inspections every month that I was doing. If you would like to do the same thing, start in January, I will do that. That's, but it's your call. I do, I do do some spot checks, but not as often depending on how busy I am, but if you ask me to go every month, that's something I'll do.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think if, to have the clerk just go by all the time, I, I believe it's best if the clerk gives us all the problem ones. If you have like a problem, someone calls you with a problem, you go inspect it, give us a report on that and then we'll make the decision whether to pull the license or not. But for him to go to every lodging house in the city of Everett is impossible.
Can I have a moment? One more time, sorry. I don't want to make this a long meeting. Just so you know, we have a new program through building and fire right now that we're all, it's, it's integrated. My office will be getting that, that program in the coming months and I'll be able to see everything that they're doing, any permits pulled, any violations. So it'll all correlate and I'll be able to pull those reports much easier. Currently, it's, I have to ask them for them. So now with the new program, I'll be able to just print it out and issue maybe monthly or quarterly reports. That's my goal by the, by the summer, to have that, that program up and running.
The point I'm trying to make is if there's no issues and no problems, there's no sense of you giving us a report. Trying to save some trees.
No, I understand that. That's what I'm saying. I'm going to, I'm going to print the ones that haven't been, they'll be at my fingertips. Currently, I have to, I have to do more, more investigation. I have to go down to ISD, get the paperwork. It'll be at my fingertips in the coming months. That's what I was telling you. It'll be easier for me to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to belabor this one, but through you to our clerk, I think some of the issues that we were looking at with this one was cameras, lighting.
Correct.
Contact information.
Correct.
Damaged fence in the side.
Yep, and they fixed, they fixed that all at 336.
There's nobody here in opposition, so I'll be voting for you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, they were good.
All right. The motion was made in second for favorable action, so please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. On items 11 and 12, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlor, I'm sorry, Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Both orders have passed. Item 18 is next.
Just one second. Item number 18 is an ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to add a new subsection three to section 31a of the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett, three marijuana establishments forbidden. And just so everyone knows, this is for ordainment.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Please call the roll.
On item number 18. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Has been ordained. Item 19.
Item number 19 is an ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to amend chapter 12, Licenses and Business Regulations of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Everett by adding the following new section, 12-12 Marijuana Establishments Forbidden.
Favorable action.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Please call the roll.
This is for a Damon.
Yes, these are all for a Damon. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Ah.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero no, zero nays, Mr. President.
Has also been ordained.
Final piece. Item number 20, Mr. President, is new business. It's a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Matusky that the terminal manager of ExxonMobil at 52 Beecham Street appear to explain why their loud horn alarm has been going off at all hours of the day for the last three months.
Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone here from ExxonMobil?
There was no one signed in and I don't see any.
Nobody signed in?
But they were informed.
They were informed by our, our city clerk and the council office.
Yes.
Mr. President, I just want to make you aware that this is, you know, I think everybody here knows that I'm a little noise sensitive after what we went through with the planes for the last five months in the summertime here. Well, for four months and in my neighborhood where I live, a constant alarm horn was going off for four or five or six or seven hours per day, starting at 3:00 in the morning, okay? Now, this is not a lie. I thought it was in Chelsea where I really couldn't do a heck of a lot about because we're in Everett, right? Well, about a week and a half ago, I called up the Everett Police Department and I, it was a pretty warm day. I put the phone out the window of my bedroom and I asked the dispatcher, I said, "Look, can we figure out where this alarm is coming from?" And she said, "Well, where do you think it's coming from?" I thought it was coming from the Schnitzel area, the waterfront, the scrap metal area down the line. And she called several businesses, Judy from 911, one of the police department people. And she called me back. She said, "They don't hear the horn over there and they don't know where it's coming from. It's not their business." I says, "Thank you very much for calling." And I closed the window. So the next day, the horn went off again. And I'm talking a loud horn, just a fog horn type of deal. I said, "I can't, my neighbors have been complaining to me and, you know, I don't want to have to keep bringing these violations up before the council of nuisances like this." We have a right, we live in an industrial mixed-use area, but for crying out loud, give us a break here, okay? We put up with the trains, the planes, the truck. Now this horn was going off for three months and I'm not kidding. Leo was at the, Councilman McKinnon heard it one day and I brought it to his, "Did you hear that? You see, you mentioned it to me." And my neighbors have been mentioning it to me. Well, I got on my car. I went by Market Forge. I took a right on Second Street. I couldn't hear the horn. I took a right where Matuccio Scrap Metal is, down toward the produce area. Couldn't hear it. Went by King Arthur's and Room of Fruit. Couldn't hear it. Then all of a sudden, I started hearing this ah, ah. And we're talking hours and I'm not, I'm not, you know, exaggerating here. Finally, I get to the Exxon terminal and I could hear it. Well, I went into the, you gotta, it's pretty restrictive there, so you have to ring a buzzer and so forth. So I asked for the terminal manager, which they used to have on-site all the time because I've dealt with that company in the past on some minor issues. But the man came to the door and I said, "Look, what is going on here? This has been going on for three months. Where's the guy in charge?" He said, "I'm the best you're gonna do. Nobody's here." I said, "What's the story with this horn?" He said, "We're fixing it now." I said, "After three months, four months? Would you like it in your neighborhood?" Well, I didn't mince my words, okay, because it took time away from my family for me to track this horn down that's been driving my neighborhood crazy and parts of the line, by the way, on Bow Street. Well, he said, "We're fixing it now." So with that, I left. I called the city clerk up because the city council office was not open at the time. So he sent an invitation out. This company is a multi-billion dollar corporation, just so you'll know. This is ExxonMobil. They're not small potatoes here. They own acres and acres of property abutting in my neighborhood with empty tanks. God only knows what they're doing down there. And it's, it seems to me that a company of this nature, Mr. President, that's a billion-dollar corporation, that can't fix a horn that's a nuisance to a nice little neighborhood and could kill us, it seems to me. And I had to track it down to find out where it was coming from. And it was nice to see item number three and four, that they made a 1,600 dollar donation to the, the Summer Job Program. Hello. In my neighborhood, it's a little too late to be friendly neighbors, okay?